The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderman Tyus. Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Iggracia. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Rice. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Valmer. Alderman Martin. Alderman Ornowitz. Alderman Murphy. Alderman Howard. Alderman Green. Alderman Odenberg. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Todd. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaquaro. Alderman Orion. Alderman Con. Alderman Clark Hubbard. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Navarro. President Reed.
Here.
Alderman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderman Hubbard. Alderman Koltar. Alderman Gunther. Alderman Martin. Alderman Howard. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Davis. Alderman Spencer. Alderman Mohammed. Alderman Con. Eighteen present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Reverend Larry Maury from Jubilee Church in the Fourteenth Ward.
Thank you, President Reed and all dramatic members for allowing me to come and pray with you today. It's a real honor and privilege for me to do this. So let's pray together. Father, what a privilege it is to be able to draw near to you. Your word says that if we draw near to you, you will draw near to us. I thank you for the many blessings that you bring into our lives. Thank you for all the blessings that our city enjoys. I pray for your blessing to continue to be poured out upon the citizens of our city. I pray that our city would prosper and that it would grow. I pray that you would bring peace and reconciliation to our city. I pray for the police officers and the firemen that put themselves in harms way every day. Protect them and Lord, keep them safe. Thank you for every person in this room today who has an active role in governing and leading our city forward. Father in heaven, please bless these men and women, the mayor's office, and all the elected officials present here today and those that are not. I thank you for each alderman and alderwoman. I pray that you would bless and guide them. I pray that the ward that they so diligently serve will be a better place to live and work after they leave office than it was when they were first elected. Psalm 127 verses one and two states, unless the Lord builds the house, those who labor build it, or those who build it labor in vain. Unless the Lord watches over the city, the watchman stays awake in vain. In light of these verses, I pray, Father, that you would oversee these proceedings here today. I pray that you would give guidance and wisdom to the aldermen and alderwomen to make wise and godly decisions that would serve the best interest of the residents of St. Louis. I pray and ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in a round of applause for Reverend Maury and thanks and appreciations for saying the prayer today. That was a great prayer. We are going to spend with our regular order of business to take up our courtesy resolutions calendar. Alderman from the twenty-second. In absence, Alderman from twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Mr. President, I move for adoption of our courtesy resolution calendar.
Move by all from twenty-second, second by all the ones from twenty-seventh. Alderman from the twenty-sixth, would you like to approach the dais?
Okay. Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, Alderman Ornowitz instructed me to talk for at least an hour. Which is going to be easy because this morning I have the pleasure of presenting a resolution to someone who clearly genuinely deserves it. And that is Ms. Colonel Lisa Taylor. You can come on up to the dais. I teased Colonel Taylor on Tuesday. That when I got the call to do this, it was an easy yes for me because we do it for people that don't deserve it or might not necessarily deserve it, not our judgment call, but just know that this one deserves it. She deserves it. Thirty-plus years in St. Louis Public Schools of keeping our babies safe. And as a proud public school parent, and she knows my children because we also know each other, she's affectionately Mama Lisa to me as well. I just applaud and appreciate your commitment to this position at St. Louis Public Schools and your mother. I can't go without being said to acknowledge Ms. B. Tate, who again, the apple did not fall far from the tree. So thank you so much. So I'm looking forward to hearing her words today. Colonel Taylor, and it's a little inside joke while I'm making sure I say Colonel Taylor this morning. So today we celebrate this phenomenal woman, Colonel Lisa Ann Taylor, to honor her for her distinguished thirty-year career at St. Louis Public Schools. Her dedication and hard work has received several promotions. August of ninety-six, she was promoted to the rank of mobile officer. January of ninety-eight, she was promoted to the rank of sergeant. May of two thousand and five, she was promoted to the rank of lieutenant. May of two thousand and seven, she was promoted to the rank of captain, and on July twenty-fourth, she was appointed to the rank of chief.
Can we have some order?
Of secretary, security. I'm sorry to throw me off. Colonel Taylor is the first female ever to attain this distinguished rank of chief, and she has faithfully served in this capacity since that time. Her leadership has brought vision, value, and trust to St. Louis Public Schools Safety and Security Department. Colonel Taylor has always demonstrated a follow-me leadership style, never asking her staff to do what she wasn't willing to do herself. She has displayed the highest example of character, ethics, morals, and unselfish service. She has been recognized with numerous awards and commendations for her exemplary professional performance, including letters of commendation, a distinguished service award presented by the City Council Youth Council, City County Youth Council, an award of merit presented by the City of St. Louis, a service charity award presented by the Harmony Grand Chapter Order of Eastern Star, a resolution from the Missouri House of Representatives, the Missouri Show Me State Residence Award from the Senate of Missouri, a letter of recognition for keeping St. Louis Public Schools safe presented by the St. Louis Mayor Francis Lay, a proclamation designating May third, two thousand and fourteen Colonel Lisa Ann Taylor Day presented by the House of Representatives of Washington, D.C., and the Missouri Visionary Leaders Award presented by the National Council of Negro Women. The Board of Aldermen congratulates you. Your retirement, your service, your dedication, we want to express our sincere appreciation for that. And on behalf of the students of St. Louis Public School, we wish you much happiness as you begin this exciting new chapter in your life. And we adopt this resolution to evidence our support and admiration for the many works, the good works that you have accomplished in St. Louis Public School system. Thank you so much.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-third.
Excuse me. Yes. Couple things, you look way too young to retire, so.
Yes.
But I do want to make sure my name is on that or that we do it in bank.
Would you like to make the motion?
Well, I will make that motion that we do it in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third, second by Alderman from the thirteenth, and Alderman from twenty-second that we make this resolution in bank. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that and get another copy of the resolution in bank.
Thank you, and God bless you in your retirement. You know, it has to be a tough position to be an authority in a school to try to balance kind and also disciplined. But God bless you and good luck in your retirement, and you look way too young, so.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
As a farmer employee of the St. Louis Public Schools, I'd like to commend you for your years of service. I recognize some faces up there. You all, I know firsthand, you do a wonderful job of running interference many times for some of the situations that come up with our youth and providing unofficial counseling for them. And I respect and admire the work you do, and I'm sure that you will be involved some way or another in the city of St. Louis and youth. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-second.
Yes, I also like to rise and say congratulations and thank you for your over thirty years of service. Serving in that capacity has to be very challenging yet rewarding because a lot of us have cousins, Pookie and Ray Ray and Man Man and John John and Shaniqua. And sometime they come to school kind of reckless, and you have to have the right temperament to deal with them. Because a lot of our kids are coming with PTSD to school and dealing with all kinds of challenges and issues, and we rely on people like you to keep all of our children safe. So again, thank you for what you do and have done.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderman from the twenty-first.
President, you know, I was getting ready to text you and say, don't forget me. Chief Taylor, thank you for your extraordinary service to the city of St. Louis and to our public schools. You do keep our schools safe. My son attends St. Louis Public Schools, and you have some of the best safety officers in our city. In fact, whenever my son goes to school, the officer greets him with a high five, have a great day scholar, and I know that's because of your leadership in everything that you do. So thank you so much. I appreciate you, and you are too young to retire. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I also just want to tell you, thanks for a job well done. Colonel and Chief Taylor, you have led that department just in an extraordinary way. And as you heard from Alderman from the twenty-third and others, it's a very delicate balance that you have to strike to enforce the law and to enforce the rules and to create a safe environment for the kids, but also make it feel welcoming, right? When, as parents, when we send our kids to school, our hope is and our expectation is, is that they're going into an environment that's going to be safe and where learning can take place. Learning cannot take place in an unsafe and unsecure environment. So your job is a big one, and all of your jobs are big ones. I am just so honored to share this dais with you today, and I want to just tell you a little bit about what this resolution represents. This resolution is the highest honor the board has to give any organization or individual. And it is an official act of the board where we all have to vote on it, as you just heard. And what it does, it cements in time some of your many contributions up until this point. So one hundred, two hundred years from now, when they research the records of the city of St. Louis, they're going to read about your history in the city of St. Louis. When they read about this point in time in our history and the Renaissance and the rebirth of our city, Colonel Taylor's name will be amongst those records. And I'm so proud and honored to have joined you here today. And congratulations to Mama Taylor. Let's give her a big round of applause. Because she put those values in you. They didn't come by themselves. She put them in you.
So with that being said, thank you again, Mama Lisa, Colonel Taylor. We would love to let you have some words to say.
Thank you for having me this morning. It's my heart, you know, I'm full, but I just want to say thank you. This day has been a long time coming. Thirty-one years is a long time to serve anybody or anything. I've had good days and I've had bad days, but I just want to say that God answered my prayer. Every day before I started my day, I asked God not to let it happen on my watch. And what I mean not let it happen on my watch, you hear about the school shootings and I was responsible at one point for over twenty-five thousand students. It went down. But you hear about the school shootings, you hear about copycatting, and I just feel that I've been blessed. I had an excellent team to be a part of the puzzle. Good people to work for. Dr. Adams gave me free range to do what I needed to do to keep the school safe. So I'm just grateful today that I'm able to walk out of here healthy. No one has forced me out. I just know that it's time. I've built a team that I feel that can keep it moving the way it should be moving. On Tuesday, the board approved for interim chief to take over. I know that he's very, very capable. He left the police department two years ago after retiring, twenty years with the juvenile division. So I feel comfortable leaving at this time, physically leaving, but not in the heart, and they know that I'm always there for them. So again, thank you for allowing me to be up here this morning, and I just want to let everybody know that our hands, our kids, come on, come on, come on. That's okay. It's going to be in good hands. So this is the female Lisa. He said, don't call him Lisa, call him Larry. So this is Sergeant Davis. He'll be taking over that title starting Thursday as chief Davis. So I mean, the same support that I have given the city, the district and all of that, he will be doing it also. So thank you so much. Mama. You okay? Okay, so I'll introduce, this is Inspector Dickerson. This is my mom. And when I started with the board, I want to say this, when I started with the board, I was a school secretary. But you know, you be asked, who are your road models? And people go all say basketball players, football players. My mother was my road model. And my mother was a police in for the housing, St. Louis Housing Authority, and then she came with St. Louis Public Schools and was a safety officer. And I admired what she was doing and dealing with at-risk kids. That it opened, you know, I just wanted to be like my mom. So that's how I end up coming and working for St. Louis Public Schools because I wanted to be just like my mother. And so she retired from St. Louis Public Schools about fourteen and two oh two. So I have my lovely aunt back here, Ms. Suzie. I have Inspector Hatley, my big brother, even though he's shorter than me. That's my big brother Kelvin. I have Officer Russell, my command staff Sergeant White, Chief Davis, Captain Dovey, and a good friend of mine, Action Jackson. So thank you again for allowing us to come. Thank you.
Let's give Chief Taylor and her guest and family one more big round of applause. Alderman from the twenty-second, are you ready?
Good morning, my esteemed colleagues. As you may remember, last Friday, our colleague from the twenty-sixth ward, Alderman Shamene Clark Hubbard, had mentioned about January being humans sex trafficking month. And for the whole time I've been alderman, which is about seventeen years now and before, in my community, we've been dealing with that issue. And it has not gotten better. It's actually has gotten worse. And so I thought it was very appropriate and very important that I participate in bringing awareness to this serious issue. So I want to read a resolution and introduce somebody who's doing phenomenal work to help us deal with this issue. Whereas it has come to our attention that this honorable board of aldermen of the city of St. Louis that since twenty-ten, January of each year, has been recognized as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And whereas this month is designated to bring attention to the issue, urge actions to end human trafficking, and help encourage and galvanize efforts toward ending it. And whereas according to the Homeland Security, human trafficking is one of the fastest-growing criminal industries in the world. After drug dealing, human trafficking is tied with the illegal arms industry as the second-largest criminal industry in the world today. It is fueled in large part by the lucrative business of tracking individuals for commercial sex exploitation. And whereas seventy-nine percent of human trafficking victims are sexually exploited, with about eighty percent being females and fifty percent being children, the average age of entry is between twelve and fourteen years old. Whereas some major factors that contribute to people becoming human trafficking victims are poverty, racism, gender inequality, addictions, and mental illness. Sex trafficking is a subcategory of commercial sex exploitation in which an individual uses different methods to control another individual in order to force or coerce them into providing sexual services for commercial gain. And whereas commercial sex exploitation takes many forms and spans numerous industries, including the internet and street-based prostitution, pornography, exotic dancing, and many others, the situation that sex trafficking victims face very dramatically. Many victims can become romantically involved with someone who then forces or manipulates them into prostitution. Others allure the false promise of a job such as modeling or dancing. Some are forced into commercial sex by their parents or other family members. They may be involved in trafficking situations for a few days or weeks, or may remain in the same or different trafficking situation for years. And whereas St. Louis is in the top twenty most prevalent cities for human trafficking in the United States according to the National Human Trafficking Hotline, since two thousand and seven, three thousand two hundred and ninety-two human trafficking cases have been reported in Missouri with a high concentration in St. Louis. This does not include all the individuals currently being trafficked or those that are free and afraid to report. Given its central location, serving as a hub for several interstate highways and international airport, and increasing economic disparities stemming from an increasingly decentralized metropolitan area and high racial segregation, St. Louis trafficking problem is only increasing. Whereas currently, most major funding and subsequently quality and innovative services for human trafficking-specific programs are limited to coastal metropolitan areas in the United States, leaving victims in the middle of this country with little or no assistance for escaping their traffickers or with a support system to lift them out of the cycle of violence. And whereas St. Louis, although one of the most prevalent cities for human trafficking, has few resources that are knowledgeable and specifically address sex trafficking and commercial sexual exploitation, and very few serving urban neighborhoods of St. Louis. Currently, there are less than a handful of programs that provide comprehensive residential or non-residential programs addressing the highly specific and sensitive needs of sex trafficking. And whereas commercial sex exploitation survivors in St. Louis and its surrounding areas, and whereas Fresh Beginnings Safe has been formally established since March of two thousand and seventeen to prevent sex trafficking, however, their staff has over ten years of experience doing this work. Whereas Fresh Beginnings Safe has been actively working in the Wells Goodfellow and Hamilton Heights neighborhood in the twenty-second ward, building relationships and saving souls. Now therefore, it be resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to recognize Sex, Human Sex Trafficking Prevention Month and urge the St. Louis community to unite to combat this problem and by adoption of this resolution, which to bring further attention to the issue and energize and energy to prevention efforts. We further direct the clerk of this board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings and to her a commemorative copy to the end that it may be presented to our honorary at a time and place deemed appropriate by the sponsor. That was a lot of information, and what I hope is some people who have never had to deal with this in their communities can get something out of this. It is a deplorable situation that we find our young women and some young men in. And it has always been my goal for many years to try to humanize this activity and get the young ladies and men out of this situation. Some of them are paralyzed in that situation. If it's not for organizations like Fresh Safe Beginnings and Sarah White, who's executive director, there would be nothing short of hopelessness in our communities. This issue hits home for me, most recently a couple of months ago. Not only are we dealing with this in the Hamilton, Wells Goodfellow, and my children have been exposed to this for over twenty years, seeing women flash with nothing underneath the gown or T-shirt, just seeing the drug dependency and their behavior in the neighborhood. I got a phone call from my daughter a couple of months ago, and she said, Dad, I was really scared. My friend and I, we were shopping at Walmart, and my daughter goes to Jackson, Mississippi, Jackson State in Mississippi. And she said, we were in an aisle, and this guy was following us. We noticed this guy in the aisle. We went to another aisle. We noticed a guy in that aisle. We went to another aisle, and we noticed the guy was in the aisle, and we got really scared. So we started walking towards security, and we noticed the guy was walking towards security with us. She did the right thing, thank God, because she got with the security officer. They had some conversation with the man. They walked them to the car. It is becoming more prevalent on our college campuses that people are taking our children, and they're placing them into this human trafficking system. Can you imagine if your baby went off to school and disappeared? That is happening right now in the city of St. Louis, ladies and gentlemen, and it's happening too often, and we must do something about it. Sure, we can complain about it when we see it in our neighborhood because it's not attractive. You waking up, hearing your faucet turned on on the side of your house, and you walk out and somebody's bathing in your gangway or in front of the house, walking out of your house and somebody has passed out from an overdose in your front yard. Those are traumatic experiences as well. And we hurt. Then I know I hurt in the neighborhood that I represent when I see that. Because I know these young ladies don't want to be there. That is not their chosen profession, whether it's through drug addiction or. That is not their chosen profession, whether it's through drug addiction, or pimp, or some romantic fantasy that they think they're involved in, to prostitute on behalf of somebody else. So I am honored, and I am proud, you know, to participate in this effort. And I am honored to have somebody like Sarah White, who has been in my neighborhood for over a year, reaching out, building relationships, and touching people in my neighborhood to get them out of this, I consider, violent situation. So I am going to ask Ms. White to speak.
Good morning. It's an honor to be here to talk about this situation. As you said, this is National Human Trafficking Awareness Month, so this is a great month for us to talk about the prevalence of it in our city, and it is really bad in our city. Our organization, essentially, we will, or eventually, we will open up a drop-in center working towards that goal, and then opening up an actual safe house. At this time, we do direct outreach, we work with other organizations, other places, you know, in collaboration when women do call us and they want out of that life. Our outreach consists of us doing harm reduction, giving, you know, meeting basic needs. We hand out purses with care package items, we hand out Narcan kits, you know, for those that, there's a lot of opioid addiction going on with a lot of the women who are being victimized. And then we hand out safe sex kits, you know, we want to make sure that these women, while they are in this life, they're, you know, keeping themselves safe, and then, you know, the Johns that come in, unfortunately, the Johns come and they sleep with these women, and then they go out into the community with their wives and everything else. So we try to, you know, focus on what is, what can we do in the place that we're at now as an organization. Obviously, we are growing and we are expanding. We do get calls from women, we have been able to get some of them off of the street, we work with other safe homes. However, the resources are very limited, and sometimes we don't always have the availability to get them, you know, immediately off the street. So there's a lot of roadblocks and hindrances that come along with trying to assist these women. I'm a survivor of child commercial sexual exploitation, which is a form of human trafficking, and so I understand what these women are going through in their lives. You know, our focus is women who are eighteen and over, there's a lot of them out there. You know, a lot of people think that it's just children being victimized, but it's really not, it's women, it's men, it's young boys, it's young girls. You know, it spans across gender, it spans across, you know, cultures, it's a huge problem, it's very prevalent in our city, unfortunately. So what we're doing is just trying to make the biggest impact that we can right now. We'll never be able to eradicate human trafficking, I think that's an unrealistic goal. But what we can do is go in and make the biggest impact, and we can go into the darkness and reach every individual that we're able to reach and get them out of that situation, and help them understand that their situation does not define them, and that they're able to lead lives that are, you know, free of human trafficking, free of sexual exploitation, and move forward in healing. So that's our biggest goal, we're working really hard right now, there's, the issue is very big, you know, it's overwhelming sometimes, the amount of women that we see on a regular basis. We're always down in Mr. Boyd's community, and that's kind of the community that we focus on. We do, you know, work with others in St. Louis City and St. Louis County, but my heart is really for the women that are in his community. So we focus on that community, and you go down the street and they're just everywhere, you know, they're being pimped out, they have drug addictions, many of them have mental health issues, they're very vulnerable, and unfortunately, we are predators that, you know, take advantage of those vulnerabilities. So our job is just to go in and try to make the biggest impact that we can.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 12th?
Thank you, Mr. President, members of board. I'd like to thank you for the work you do, and yes, sex trafficking is more prevalent than you think. I believe every day, if you just look on Facebook, you see two or three pictures of kids out there that are looking for. And the opioid addiction, it's a disease. I mean, people don't want to be on it, you know, I know that. I've never downed or talked bad about a person who's been on heroin or overdose. I actually had a couple of family members that went through it, relapsed maybe eight, nine, ten times, and finally was able to kick it. So, yes, and the Alderwoman from Ward 11 stays very much involved with sex trafficking, she's even held meetings in her area regarding it. So I just want to thank you for everything you do, and yes, people do need a lot of help out there, and unfortunately, you know, I wish we had resources to help everybody one time, but we just don't, so just try to get small groups a little at a time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 23rd?
Couple things, one, I hope my name's on that, if not, I would make a motion that we do it in bank.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 23rd, second by Alderman from the 21st, and a couple others. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Now, Clark, please make note of that, and create another copy of the resolution in bank.
Sorry, I just wanted to bring, and I sent a letter to everyone, you'll get it, but last night, the shelter for women, where they take women, were full, and they were turned away in the bus. I met with these girls downstairs, they talked about being raped. One girl, while screaming, they used a two-by-four to knock her teeth out, she's down in the Road Tunda now. So, and the letter came from the head of the homelessness stuff, that, you know, that's supposed to be taken care of, but we keep hearing there's plenty of beds, plenty of this. Last night, by their own admission, the city turned away the busload with women in it, saying, we have no room for you, they were forced out on the street while being raped. And we have to, there's a lot more than, I mean, this even goes farther than sex trafficking. It means putting vulnerable people, leaving them out there, saying, gee, well, we've done the best we can, we're doing what we can, we've spent all the money, there's no more beds, when there are people willing to help. But anyway, I just, it touches a little bit today to me, because I met with these women that were turned away last night, it's verified, I sent a letter to all the Aldermen, it's verified that the city turned these women away.
Oh, thank you, Alderman. Alderman from the 11th?
Thank you, Mr. President. Alderman from the 22nd, I just want to thank you and commend you for doing this in a way that really highlights the underlying issues and the roots of the problem. And also, I want to thank you for coming to the 11th, and I've been to your ward to discuss this with folks, and also just take a tour, and unfortunately, it's very prevalent in both of our wards. I also just want to say, this has garnered a lot of attention this month, and I think that's wonderful, and I look forward to working with you and some of the other interested Aldermen on talking about how law enforcement handles this, and as well, we can work on this in the city, with the city, and really find out the best way to get people the treatment they need, and look for diversions. Thank you very much, and thank you for coming.
Thank you. Alderman from the 24th?
Thank you, Mr. President, just to echo the words of Alderman Martin, I wanted to thank you, both Alderman Boyd and Ms. White, for putting this together. The, you know, our state motto says that we should let the welfare of our people be the supreme law of our land, and when we look at this issue, there's so much intersectionality with homelessness, with addiction, with, you know, so many other issues that we come here and, you know, try to combat every day. And so I wanted to thank you for looking at this through a lens of harm reduction, and not demonizing any of the folks who may end up in some of these situations through absolutely no fault of their own. I know that sometimes there's a stigma that comes with people that end up in those situations, but I think that one of the most important things that we should be doing here, in this room, is to look out for people who are hopeless, and people who are oppressed, and people who are defenseless. And so I, again, to echo Alderwoman Martin, I hope that there's more that we can do moving forward on this front, and please don't hesitate to let me or anyone else here know what we can do to help you out, because this is a major issue, and we need to do better on it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Also, just want to, you know, thank you, Ms. White, for all of the work that you've done for all the years, in helping people that not only need our help, but should automatically get our help, right? And to raise awareness, and to also humanize it, because as the Alderman from the 22nd said, people look at it and think, okay, that can never be me, that can never be one of my family members, that can never be my son, my daughter, my aunt, my uncle, but the reality is, it could be, right? It absolutely could be. Only by luck of the draw, and only by other humans, other circumstances, that some of us have not, it has not impacted our households directly, but it could. So I thank you, Alderman Boyd, for bringing this forward, I thank Alderman from the 26th for her works in this effort, Alderman from the 11th, and also the Alderman from the 25th. And if he was here today, we would certainly hear from him, because he has been talking about this issue for years, and talking about, we need to invest more in it. So this action should lead to something. This action should lead to more investment in it, this action should lead to more awareness in it. So I thank you, Alderman from the 22nd, and thank you, Ms. White, for your works. Let's give them a big round of applause.
Again, I just want to thank everybody for listening, increase the awareness of this, let's talk about it more, and as the President said, let's allow this to be an opportunity to do more in the future. And I certainly appreciate everybody doing it in bank.
Let's give Ms. White one more big round of applause for all the work that she has done, continues to do. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution, count all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. With that, we'll return to our regular order of business, introduction of honored guests, any introduction of honored guests? Alderman from the 24th?
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to let the folks up on the balcony know, I see the Close the Workhouse folks up there, and just wanted to let you know that I see you up there.
Alderman from the 21st?
Thank you, Mr. President, I was clearly up before the Alderman from the 24th, get you some new glasses. No, I want to welcome our folks from Close the Workhouse campaign, and also a dedicated and committed public servant, he is the president of the Firefighters Institute for Ways and Equality, Mr. Percy Green III, who's up on the balcony with us as well.
Alderman from the 23rd?
Yes, I'd like to recognize our past clerk, who's sitting up there, he's best, I think he, were you given Best Dressed Man by Gentleman Quality, or Mad Magazine, I think it was. Anyway, I'd like to welcome Dave Sweeney as my special guest and my friend.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? Also like to, you know, Mary Reese has done just a tremendous job for us throughout the years, she hates to be on the spot, you see those eyes? You're not going to, see, I can say anything I want to at the mic, you can't stop me today. But, you know, over New Year's, Mary was married, so she is now Mrs. Goodman, so Mary Reese Goodman, let's give her a big round of applause, congratulations. And her husband Brad is none other than an IT guy. I love programmers, because I'm an IT guy myself, so that was all good. Any further introductions? Any further inductions? Alderman from the 23rd?
I did miss this, and I wanted to say something. I had saw today that Fred Circe, who's usually here at every meeting, his dad died, so I would just ask that everyone keep him in your prayers, he would normally be my special guest, but because of that, I'm sure that's why he's not here.
Alderman from the 1st?
So at an appropriate time, I would like us to do a moment of silence.
You can do it right now.
But I'd also like to add that one of the people that's spent many years down here lobbying us, Ms. Joanne Williams, lost her older sister over the week also, so I was wondering if we could do a moment of silence for both Joanne's family and Fred Circe's family.
Would everyone please rise who's able to stand for a moment of silence? Thank you. Approval of the minutes?
Approval of the minutes for January the 10th, 2020.
Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize motion for approval of the minutes?
Mr. President, members of board, I move for approval of the minutes dated January the 10th, 2020.
Move by Alderman from 22nd, second by Alderman from 12th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries, reporter city officials.
Reporter city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda, and has been placed in the Alderman's mailboxes.
We would dispense with line item seven, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? We would dispense with line items eight through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 191, sponsored by Alderwoman Rice, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderwoman Navarro, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderman Gunther, and Alderwoman Green. An ordinance amending ordinance 68597 by creating and defining six temporary food permit types with the permit fee schedule identifying low-income, low-access census tracts, establishing a temporary food safety training special fund to help pay for temporary food safety training, recognizing and requiring a free application with the Health Department for cottage food production operation temporary food permit waivers established by revised statutes of Missouri 196.298, and further explaining what happens to a newly annual approvable food permit that is not provided within ninety days, all to be codified in Chapter 11.42 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis. Board Bill 192, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, an ordinance authorizing the amendment to ground lease between the City of St. Louis and Lucas Hunt Associates LP, a Missouri Limited Partnership for Property and Improvements, commonly known as the Hampton Gardens Apartment, located at 5927 Susan Place at St. Louis, Missouri 63139. That is extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee.
To the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill 191, to Ways and Means, Board Bill 192. That is extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bills were reported out of public safety with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 107, committee subsponsored by Alderman Mohammed, an ordinance directing the City of St. Louis Division of Police, establish nine police districts, the boundaries of which shall be drawn in accordance with the map, set forth in Exhibit A attached here too, and to the extent of the Commission of the City of St. Louis Division of Police, deems reasonable and appropriate in the light of changing community and law enforcement needs, division of police resources, including officers, shall be apportioned equally amongst the nine police districts and each police district. Board Bill 186, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Fire Commissioner to enter into and execute a grant agreement with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Federal Emergency Management Agency through the Missouri Department of Homeland, I'm sorry, Homeland Security for the purpose of funding to support the cybersecurity, coordinate position at the St. Louis Fusion Center, and to expand funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and containing an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Health and Human Services with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 187, sponsored by Alderman Ornowitz and Alderman Todd, an ordinance authorizing and directing the Director of Department of Human Services to accept a grant award from the St. Louis Community Foundation in the amount of $26,000 for the current fiscal year, and to expand those funds for the City of St. Louis U-Mater, appropriating such funds and authorizing the Director of Department of Human Services upon approval of the Board of Estim and Apportment to expand such funds as permitted by the grant award agreement and contain an emergency clause. and contain an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of Ways and Means with the due pass recommendation. Board bill 141, sponsored by Alderman Boyd. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estment and Apportionment making a supplemental appropriation to the annual budget ordinance 70963 for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2019 and ending June 30th, 2020, amounting to the sum of $250,000 and containing an emergency clause. That is extent of second reading.
We dispense with line item 14 at the request of the Alderman from the sixth. Please place board bill 171 on the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Perfection consent.
We have not.
Board bills for perfection.
Board bill 171, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Martin, Alderman Navarro, Alderman Green, Alderman Tyus, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Vacoro, and Alderman Norrion. An ordinance prohibiting the departments, offices, and other divisions of the City of St. Louis, the Mayor's Office, and the Board of Aldermen, the offices of the City's Collector of Revenue, Treasurer, Recorder of Deeds, License Collector, Circuit Attorney, and Sheriff, and the City's Board of Election Commissioners from asking applicants for employment about their salary history, including wages, benefits, and any other compensation unless otherwise provided herein and containing a severability clause. That is extent of board bills for perfection.
Alderman, Alderman from the sixth, you recognize on perfection of board bill 171.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to perfect board bill 171.
Move by Alderman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. Alderman, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a floor substitute for board bill 171. It should be on everyone's desk. I'd like to move to introduce that.
It's been moved by Alderman from the sixth that we introduced floor substitute for board bill 171 and it should be on everyone's desk. Entertainer second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Alderman from the sixth, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. Board bill 171 floor substitute makes one minor change. This board bill would ban city offices, county offices, and all elected offices in the City of St. Louis from asking about salary history on employment applications and in interviews. It's designed to address the pay equity issue that we have between what women are making and what men are making, especially for women of color here in the City of St. Louis in follow suit with a number of states who have adopted similar laws and other municipalities who have done the same. And again, this change, what we inadvertently left the comptroller's office off. And so that's the only change throughout the board bill. And I'm happy to take questions.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion on board bill 171 floor substitute? Any further discussion? Alderman from the sixth, you recognize to close.
Thank you, Mr. President. I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we, actually, I need you to make the motion for. I need you to make a motion to adopt a floor substitute.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we adopt board bill 171 floor substitute.
Been moved by Alderman from the sixth, seconded by Alderman from the ninth. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of board bills for perfection.
And at the request of the Alderman from the first, could you please place board bill 178 on the regular third reading calendar?
So noted.
Third reading consent.
Board bill 6387, 122, 125, 142, 163, 166, 167, 143, 145, 156, 164, 165, 149, and 176.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Mr. President, members of board, I move for adoption of a third reading consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-seventh. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coutar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Todd, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacoro, Alderman Norrion, Alderman Con, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Moore, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Davis, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Con. 24 aye votes.
By vote, you stay in motion, Alderman from the twenty-second and third read and finally pass the aforementioned bills. Third reading reporter engagements.
Board bill 178, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey. An ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A are making satisfactory progress under the proposed time scheduled for the completion of projects therein.
Alderman from the seventeenth, you recognize on third reading final passage of board bill 178.
Yes, Mr. President, I move for a third reading. I move for passage.
It's been moved by Alderman from the seventeenth. Entertainer second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the thirteenth. Any further discussion? Alderman from the seventeen, you recognize close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we third reading final pass board bill 178. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Coutar, Alderman Rice, Alderman Gunther, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Martin, Alderman Ornowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Oldenburg, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Todd, Alderman Davis, Alderman Spencer, Alderman Mohammed, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacoro, Alderman Norrion, Alderman Con, Alderman Clark Hubbard, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Navarro, President Reed, Alderman Middlebrook, Alderman Moore, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Howard, Alderman Davis, Alderman Con. 23 aye votes and one no vote.
By vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the seventeenth and third read and finally pass board bill 178.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
Oh, I thought you said aye. I thought you said aye. But, okay, so what do you want me to do?
So the Alderman from the eighth, you wanted your vote to be cast as a no? Yeah, she stated no, so just make it a no. And restate the totals again.
So there's 22 aye votes and two no votes.
By vote, you stay in the motion, Alderman from the seventeenth and third read and finally pass board bill 178. Reporter enrollment.
Board bill 6387, 122, 125, 142, 163, 166, 167, 143, 145, 156, 164, 165, 178, 149, and 176.
All other businesses being suspended. The president shall in open session fix this signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. First reading resolutions.
Resolution 205, sponsored by Alderman Gunther. Advisory resolution to the Board of Estment and Apportionment regarding the closing of the workhouse and the reapportionment of funds.
Alderman from the ninth, you recognize on first reading of resolution 205.
Thank you, Mr. President. And again, thank you to all the Close the Workhouse people in the balcony today. I would ask that resolution 205 be moved to public safety.
It's been moved by Alderman from the ninth that we send resolution 205 to public safety. It's been seconded by Alderman from the twenty-first. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Assign resolution 205 to public safety.
So noted. Resolution 206, sponsored by President Reed. Last day for introduction of board bills for the 2019-2020 legislative session.
Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize on the first reading of resolution 206.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for unanimous consent.
Here are no objection, please proceed.
Yes, Mr. President, members of board. Pursuant to Rule 56, this resolution basically authorized the president to set February 21st, 2020 as the last date to introduce board bills for the Board of Aldermen 2019 through 2020 session.
It's been moved, would you like to?
Oh, I'm sorry. I move for adoption of resolution 206.
Got in front of you there. It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth and the twenty-third and the first. Well, it was seconded by Alderman from the first. All hands, we giving it to you, Alderman from the first. It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-second, seconded by Alderman from the first that we adopt resolution 206. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Resolution 209, sponsored by Alderman Vacoro. Reopening the New Life Evangelistic Center.
Alderman from the twenty-second, twenty-third. You recognize on the first reading of resolution 209.
Thank you. A couple of quick things. I, this bill, I've gotten calls from people downtown that have told me, we need to be making it tougher on the homeless to try and drive them out of downtown. We're told from the mayor's office on down, there's plenty of shelter for them at night. But last night, by admittance of them, they turned away the bus with women on it and they were left out last night. There's one place that holds about 30 people that is open during the day. This is simply about treating people like human beings. Some people said, well, why don't you put it in your ward? I have no issue. If they want to bust in and we find a little building we could put some people in, a strictly day shelter. If it follows all the rules and that's what we're saying with this, I'm fine. But all this not in my backyard.
Alderman, Ald.
Haven't stayed as point of, haven't stayed as point of order.
No, no, no.
This is on my resolution.
I know. Alderman from the, Alderman from the twenty-third, would you like to request unanimous consent? Or would you like it sent to the?
I want to have it sent to my committee so it gets debated.
All right, you can do that.
But I'd like to discuss what that's about.
But your other option is to have, have the clerk read.
Well, okay, what I would like then is to have it read out loud and then put in my committee.
All right, all right. All, Madam Clerk, do you have a copy of resolution 209? Would you, you want to just?
Resolution 209 urging the city to work with the New Life Evangelistic Center. Whereas for over 40 years, New Life has provided services to the homeless persons in the City of St. Louis, which until 2007 included providing shelter for homeless persons at New Life Evangelistic Center located at 1411 Locust Street. And whereas in 2007, New Life Evangelistic Center was closed by the city due to a number of code violations and such closures has had a continual negative impact on homeless persons and the city as a whole. And whereas the measures that must be taken to address the violations, preventing New Life Evangelistic Center from reopening as an overnight shelter, including obtaining the city's approval of architectural plans or daunting. However, the task of addressing the concerns would permit New Life Evangelistic Center to open as a day shelter for homeless persons is more attained, attainable. And whereas there is significant need in the city for a warm, safe, temporary place for homeless persons and the City of St. Louis is in a position to work with New Life to remedy the violations, keeping New Life Evangelistic Center shuttered in order to establish such a space. And now therefore let it be resolved by this honorable, honorable Board of Aldermen that we urge the city to work in good faith with the New Life Evangelistic in an effort to remedy the violations preventing New Life Evangelistic Center from opening as a day shelter and providing a warm, safe, temporary space for homeless persons. Introduced on the 17th day of January, the 20, January 2020 by the Honorable Joe Vacoro, 23rd Ward, adopted the 17th day of January 2020 as attested.
Alderman from the twenty-third, you recognize. Would you like to make a motion for it to go to?
Yeah, I would like to make that motion that it goes to the, to my committee, to public safety.
It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third that we assign resolution 209. It's been moved, been moved by Alderman from the 23rd that we assign Resolution 209 to public safety, entertain, and it's been seconded by Alderman from the 21st. Any discussion on the assignment?
Add my name to, if you would add my name to the.
There'd be time to do that once it goes, it's been moved and seconded that we assign Resolution 209 to public safety. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please assign Resolution 209 to public safety.
So noted. That is extent of first reading of resolutions.
Second reading.
We have none.
Missed line is unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Monday, January the 20th, 2020, the office will be closed in honor of Martin Luther King holiday. Wednesday, January the 22nd, rules will have a meeting at 10:00 a.m. in the leisure room. Public safety will meet at 11:00 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. And Friday, January the 24th, full board meeting is 10:00 a.m. in the chambers.
Alderman from the 18th.
As we close Monday, we should remember what Dr. King really fought for.
Let's have some water, please.
We should remember what Dr. King fought for. When Doc, Dr. King got killed in 1968, he got killed when he was, he was getting ready to organize the Poor People's Campaign. Many of these problems that we are having today, if we followed the leadership of Dr. King, which he was for guaranteed annual income, that's what we need. We need a guaranteed annual income. This would solve homelessness. This would reduce crime, because many of the things that we talk about when we talk about crime, we're talking about crimes of poverty. I repeat, crimes of poverty. We could, the police are not going to solve crime. The only way we're going to be safer is that we reduce poverty. And when we think about Dr. King, Dr. King was working so that everyone would have an income, and it would be cheaper. Right now, we are spending $70,000 to keep the workhouse open, which is a waste of taxpayers' money. We are spending $35,000 to keep the Justice Department open, the Justice Center. That is not making us safer. Those are only public works programs. We need a guaranteed annual income for people who cannot work because of physical, mental, or any other addiction. And those who can work, the government is responsible for creating good paying, full-time jobs for people who want to work, and they should be getting retirement. So that's what Dr. King was fighting for, and we, and that's what we need, that should be our ultimate goal, because housing is a human right. Food is a human right. Nobody should have to steal food. Nobody should be without medical care, and nobody should be in any unsafe environment. Thank you very much, and let's have a good holiday for Dr. King.
All right, thank you. All the one from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to take, first of all, I want to thank the Alderman from the 18th. Sometimes we get so caught up in things, our business, that we forget about people who were important that went before us. And Martin Luther King's birthday was the 15th, but we are celebrating it next week. So thank you for reminding us of the, that the reason that we stand here today is because people like Dr. Martin Luther King made it available for us to be able to do that. I wanted to take a minute to speak to something I saw today, this week at the state capitol. I am appalled in my 29 years being in politics to watch the mayor of the City of St. Louis, the public safety director, and the police commander go up to Jefferson City to ask that they overrule the vote of the Board of Aldermen. I cannot, I, I'm just flabbergasted. I have a resolution, my resolution was so long, I didn't introduce it because I was so mad that I have to cut things out of it. I will be sending it to all of you all this weekend, asking you to look at it, suggestions, because we cannot let this go on. We are a deliberative body, a branch, equal branch of the government. There are three branches of government at all levels, federal, state, and local. The Board of Aldermen is to be respected. I don't, I cannot believe that the mayor went to a Republican body, here we sit all Democrats, and said override, because I wanted to have it my way. So I don't care how they voted. She better be glad there's some people who are much more reasonable than me, because she'd never get anything else through this Board of Aldermen after what she's done, okay? That is simply unacceptable. I also want to put a cautionary tale to the police chief commander. You are no longer an independent soul. You are part of civil service. You don't let the mayor and the public safety director have you go someplace where they say that you are doing politics, because you are not supposed to be doing that. You don't just report to the mayor, you report to all of us. So be very careful about what you're doing. I am just out, I'm outraged that the mayor would do such a thing.
And all, and all the woman, and, and that's your, your announce, this is all part of you announcing that you're going to be introducing the resolution.
Right, and so, right, I'm just, I'm going to introduce the resolution, you all will get it. I just don't want the police chief to get in trouble, and I want the mayor to be reminded that we are an equal body, and that when we say no, and just like if she vetoes something, how is she like it if we go up to the state and say, let's override the mayor? And then for all those Republicans up there who always talks about state rights, okay, if you do this, then I'm, we want to call on the federal government to take over Missouri, because I don't like the things that they do up in Jefferson City. Thank you.
Thank you, all. All the woman from the 28th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I know that we are all watching the weather with some trepidation, and I know people are canceling their plans left and right, but I just want to say that the ice and snow will be arriving just in time for the Delmar Loop Ice Carnival, which will not be canceled. So if you want to revel in our winter weather, please come down to the loop this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. There's going to be ice carving, ice sculptures, ice slides, a temporary tattoo scavenger hunt, which you will have to show up to find out what that's all about. So please come down, you'll get just enough ice and snow, and then there's plenty of places that you'll be able to hop inside for a warm meal. So look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further announcements? Alderman from the 24, 20, 22nd, or you want?
Yes, Mr. President, members of board, I'd like to announce that MoDOT will be having a community meeting at the Best Place 5736 Dr. Martin Luther King Drive on January the 23rd from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. The reason for this is to do outreach, the 22nd, thank you, Alderman from the 21st to 22nd of January, from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. And this is to talk about Natural Bridge. They've been doing some work and studies for about two years, looking at how they can do traffic calming on Natural Bridge from the city limits, basically all the way downtown. So it's going to be very informative. There's been a lot of good work. Most people know that Natural Bridge is one of the dangerous roads in America. So I want to encourage as many people to come out as possible to listen to all the work that has been done and the recommendation. Again, that's January the 22nd, at the Best Place 5736 Dr. Martin Luther King Drive from 3:30 to 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All the one from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Tomorrow is also the Fourth Annual Women's March here in St. Louis. National Day of Action will be kicking it off at 10:00 a.m. at Polkert Park. As of right now, it is still on, and we anticipate that it will still be on even in inclement weather, but, you know, please check the Women's March Facebook page just to make sure, but we would love to see you at 10:00 a.m. tomorrow.
All right. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Mr. President, members of board, I move to excuse the all the women from, all the woman from the second, the Alderman from the fourth, the Alderman from the 19th, and the Alderman from the 25th due to necessary access.
Been moved by Alderman from the 22nd, entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the 21st, and all the one from the first. Any discussion? All, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. All the one from the 22nd, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, members of board, I move to adjourn until next Friday, January the 24th, 10:00 a.m.
Moved by Alderman from the 22nd, entertain a second on that motion, seconded by Alderman from the third, and Alderman from the 27th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose. We stand adjourned.